And it looks like we're recording, so I get my gavel, it's official. And good afternoon, I'm going to go ahead and call this session of the City of Seidra Willie Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is September 8th, 2020 at 1:00 PM. We have one item on the agenda today, this is number CUP 2020-032, a request for a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of the existing self-storage facility at 1320 East Moore Street. My name is Andrew Reeves, I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center, who the city has selected to hold certain land use application hearings like this one. And today it will be my role to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether this proposal complies with the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a conditional use permit under Chapter 1756 of the Seidra Willie Municipal Code. To that end, I received several... And if we could just mute those that are not currently participating, I'm getting quite a bit of feedback. I think you might have to mute yourselves, but I will... But as we all know with these Zoom meetings, the background noise or cross talk can be quite distracting. So I think what I was saying was I had received several exhibits in advance of the hearing today that I had an opportunity to review. These include a staff report prepared by city staff analyzing the proposal, the application materials themselves, information about the environmental law review that occurred under the State Environmental Policy Act, some specific project plans. There were four comment letters, one of which came in just moments before we got started. So those are the comments from Yunkin Lundstram, Wright, and BYK Construction, Inc. So I've had an opportunity to review those. The former decisions related to this proposal, a wetland reconnaissance that found there were no wetlands on site. So those are the items that I've had an opportunity to review, and they've been labeled Exhibits A through P, as in Paul, with the final letter from John Wright that just came in, I'm going to make that Exhibit P. So those are the record, those are the exhibits I'm admitting into the record. Should anyone have additional exhibits they would like admitted, let me know, and it's your opportunity to testify. And I'll go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, our testimony today will be under oath or affirmation. That's because we're my decision to be appealed under our State's Land Use Petition Act. The recording from today's hearing, as well as the admitted exhibits, would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. It's a little challenging doing this remotely, but we're all making do as best we can. So for purposes of getting people sworn in, rather than try to do it multiple times, I'm just going to ask anyone who feels that they might be testifying today, go ahead and raise your right hand for me, and I'm going to get everyone sworn in right now. So do you all swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today? And in my head, I'm hearing a chorus of "yes, I do's," "thank you," so everyone is sworn in. So we've handled that, and then this is being recorded here on Zoom. And so everyone is consenting to being recorded as part of today's hearing. The hope is that for the annals of history, only the audio recording will ever remain, but who knows? I just feel as the lawyer on the case, I need to ensure that I warn people about the recording that's happening right now. So I think those are the basics. The order that we're going to follow, or we usually follow here in the city, is first I'm going to turn it over to city staff to give an overview of the proposal and any recommendations that staff has. Then we'll turn it to our applicant representative to provide any additional detail. They feel that myself and members of the public should be aware of. Then I will turn it over to members of the public and find out if there are folks interested in providing testimony and comments today. And then if appropriate, at the end, we'll turn it back to the applicant team and city staff to respond to any such comments or testimony. I may and often do ask questions of those that are testifying, I'm not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure I have a thorough understanding of the proposal so that within 10 business days of the record closing, I'm able to produce a decision that is hopefully sensible and legally defensible. So that's where we're at. I thank everyone for taking the time to participate today. And at this point, we'll turn it over to Catherine Ware on behalf of city staff.
Hi, thank you. So this is a proposal to expand the existing Skagit self-storage facility located off of Highway 20, also known as Eastmore Street, at 1320 Eastmore Street. There's an existing facility in the front. The proposal was to be on the back parcel of five acre expansion. While reviewing this proposal, the city found that it meets most requirements. And while not strictly in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the mitigation measures provided or recommended by the city do bring it up to an acceptable level and the city staff finds that it doesn't interfere with the comprehensive plan intent in a significant way. So on that note, staff recommends approval with conditions. And we have spoken with the applicant about the conditions and I've heard that they are willing to propose to use the shortest buildings on the west side, and they already have the shortest buildings on the east side, and the north side met setback requirements. So those buildings as are are fine. And so we are willing to support 20 feet side setbacks. So for condition one, or sorry, condition two, the city would be willing to support 20-foot side setbacks if they have the shortest buildings on the sides. In addition, for condition six, comply with the mitigation requirements set forth by the MDNS. There was public comment and concern about the lighting, and staff finds that the shielding lighting from residential properties condition has not been adequately addressed or satisfied, so would recommend complying with those mitigation requirements.
And the question there, Ms. Ware, to be clear, the mitigation requirements and these recommended conditions of approval are meant and intended on applying to the site as a whole, not just the new expansion areas. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to be clear about that.
Yes, so the lighting fixtures we were talking about are on the front of the building. And we received, outside of the comment period, some photos from a neighbor of the glare at night. And it was significant. I can share my screen and show that if you'd like.
Sure, this can be a demonstrative exhibit, meaning it won't be entered into the record, but we can all see it on a shared screen. And this relates to the comment that John Wright sent, correct?
That's correct, yes. So Elaine Wright sent comments outside of the comment period with photos addressing the lighting. So we saved those, and then we received additional comments from John Wright in time to be included in our record. So let me just pull that up.
Oh, I was going to say, if you have them, you can try to share them. I'm not seeing anything yet.
Oh, I'm getting...
No worries.
So full disclosure, I have never shared my screen before, so...
So we could be in for some excitement, is what you're warning?
Yeah. Okay, is that working?
Your screen is being shared.
Are you seeing a photo of the Skagit self-storage facility?
Not yet. It's showing me the JPEG, kind of looks like it's not open yet.
Oh, I see. Well, hold on.
Catherine, I think it might be on your other screen. Move it over to the screen that has the file.
Just a moment. So... I'm going to try this again. Okay, did that work?
There we go.
Thanks for bearing with me, folks. So there's photo one, two, and these are taken from Polty Street, and three.
So the idea then would be that on the existing building, appropriate lighting fixtures are installed, and then on the new portions of the property, all lighting is shielded down so that so as to not impact opposing or neighboring properties, is that...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so the MDNS then requires the applicant submit a lighting plan, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
And technically, this is John speaking. The existing conditional use permit requires that they not, that lighting be shielded. So for technical purposes, the current lighting situation is not in compliance. So they're going to have to fix that regardless.
Yeah.
It ends with the existing conditional use permit.
Got it. And is that also then true with the landscaping, Mr. Coleman?
Any changes will affect the landscaping. So the new landscaping plan that we've already looked at should manage, should have the appropriate landscaping.
Right, I guess what I'm thinking is if, you know, the applicant receives the conditional use permit, opts not to move forward with the project. I recall seeing some photos, or there was some issues with the fact that there's some landscaping that was never installed that should have been, is that accurate or not?
The back part of the property is where they're proposing the expansion is a significant part of the landscaping for the first one, for the existing facility.
Right.
So I don't think that there would be, well... Oh, I see what you mean about the not proper screening on the front. That's, I haven't looked at it from that perspective, but that could also be true.
Yeah, and the idea is being that obviously we're looking at this and sort of trying to be a cohesive way of looking at this. But again, if the applicant doesn't move forward for whatever reason, there's some issues outstanding from the last go-around that weren't fully addressed that would need to be addressed regardless of what happened. Does that track?
Can actually answer that, that statement is entirely true.
Okay.
Because I haven't looked at it from that perspective, we were just trying to make it right as part of this one, but it is possible that it's not in compliance with the landscaping requirements for the first phase. But it was just easy enough to make sure that it was taken care of with this updated CUP.
Got it, okay. Did you have further comments, Mr. Coleman?
I'm trying to let Catherine speak, I'm just filling in some blanks here.
Right, I was going to turn it back to her if you were done.
I'm done.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying. Yes, so I believe we don't have any more comments other than those. So...
Okay, I did have some questions for you. First, looking through the exhibits, let's see what exhibit number this is. I think it's part of Exhibit F, but there's a page here that says, "City of Seidra Willie mailing procedure." And it says, "There's an affidavit, and it's I, John Ravnick hereby certify such and such." But then the copy I have isn't signed or dated or anything. Do we know if there was a signed and dated affidavit?
Yes, and that would be included with the original application, and that is Exhibit B. And so they didn't need to refill that out.
Got it, okay. I wasn't sure what that was, okay. Now I get it. So I see that Exhibit B, Ms. Ravnick signed on February 6th, so that took care of that, okay. None issue. And then I know that one of the comments was from Mr. Lundstram, who I believe is joining us today, but he, let's see. He had some concerns about landscaping. I think the concern about the height of the building, or I guess we don't know the heights of the current buildings.
We have discussed that, I believe it was, and Lance or John Ravnick can jump in on this too. I think it was eight and a half feet on the side and 17 feet in the rear. But they don't have, you know, construction plans in yet, so this is the conceptual phase.
Right. And then, let's see, concerns about access, you know, some kind of, is there proposed fencing between adjacent properties?
I...
May I step in?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the new plans, and it looks like Lance has taken in considerations all the questions that I had.
Okay, so that was you speaking just now, correct, Mr. Lundstram?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any further comments you wanted to add? We're going out of order here, but while we're talking, I'll just run with it.
Well, yeah, I do have just two, as of right now. As far as the lighting, I live just right behind the first phase. And they, as far as I'm concerned, any lighting that's inside the area is actually great. It's no, it really doesn't give me any problems at all. The only time I might notice any lighting at all would be if it's foggy out, and then the lighting goes straight up. It's not like glaring, so I don't know if there's any issues with lighting other than maybe those couple that are facing the main road. I don't, you know, as I said, I don't see any issues whatsoever since they put in these units. And the other deal is, as far as landscaping, Lance has taken care of the stretches behind me. He's actually put grass in, which is actually, I feel, at least behind me, is better than maybe trees or anything, because I don't want to have to deal with maybe leaves and stuff blowing off the trees or the trees growing taller than the buildings. So as far as I'm concerned, the landscaping behind me is just fine.
And what direction do you live in relative to the site?
My address is 387. I live just to the west of the the storage units. I'm the last house.
Yeah, so on the site plan, it looks like, yeah, you're the last house off Carter Street.
Correct.
That would, but it'll kind of have a corner, a landscaped corner there, basically.
Right, which, you know, I'm going to have the part of the new, the new facility also in my, on the north side of my property. And as far as I've looked over the plans and they actually, I am happy with it. Looks like there's going to be a fence and not a gate. I didn't really want to see access onto Carter. It looks like that's been dealt with, so I'm very happy.
Okay, well, good. Glad to hear that the changes were made to ensure that you wouldn't feel detrimentally impacted. That's sort of the point of why we do these conditional use permits and permit hearings. So thank you for participating. At this point, I am going to go back to Ms. Ware to see if there were any additional thoughts that the city had, but thank you, Mr. Lundstram. And Ms. Ware, I guess my question had to do with the proposed conditions, and I just don't have the Seidra Willie Municipal Code memorized. But often with landscaping, the municipal code will have specific requirements related to bonding or ensuring that, you know, you get 80% growth within three years, et cetera. Is that built into the code, or is that something that theoretically might need best be addressed through conditions? Just to ensure that what is proposed actually happens?
Yeah, we address it through conditions, but the site is required to provide 15% landscaping per the code. And so often we'll call that out in the conditions just to make sure that that gets done. And often, you know, the landscaping plan comes with the building permit.
Okay.
For full...
Okay, so here, you know, it says, "The landscape screening shall be 80% site obscuring at the time of planting and 100% within two years." I suppose if I'm a neighbor and I feel like the landscaping isn't up to snuff in two years, you know, would it be through code enforcement that the city would ensure that that would ultimately be taken care of?
I'm going to turn that, yeah, to John.
Section 17.50.090 speaks to the maintenance of plant materials, and that does speak of performance bonds, requirements for replacing dead trees. And the length of the guarantee shall be no less than one year with an 80%, 80% survival rate, and always cover at least one growing season. So it is covered in the landscaping code and the condition on the that staff had suggested, used the language right out of the code.
Okay.
And paste it in there, so it was very clear what the criteria is.
Great, thank you for clarifying. That's what I was asking. So if the code has additional language or requirements, the applicant has to comply with the code. I don't need to add it as a condition. Does that make sense, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, the code, yeah, the code needs to be met regardless.
Right.
Yeah, so the only thing we need to be careful is that we're not writing something that makes it sound like we're, the conditional use permit is permitting something less than what the existing code is.
Right, we don't want to contradict the code. Excellent, okay. And then, in addition, the landscaping, again, the landscaping, if I recall correctly from the materials, there was the landscaping and landscape plan are intended to maybe fill in some of the existing landscaping. I'm looking at, oh, page seven of the staff report showing that the east side doesn't have landscape screening, and the front side isn't fully screened. And the hope was that some additional landscape screening would occur there, correct, Ms. Ware?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Great. Well, I believe those were the immediate questions, let's see. Sorry, check the final. We already covered that, okay. Yes, those were the immediate questions, other than we always ask, but has the comprehensive plan or zoning code been amended in any way since this application was deemed complete that would impact this proposal?
No.
Okay, great. Well, so then at this point, I think I will turn it to our applicant, and I believe that'll be Lance, Lance Campbell, showing up as Lance, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell at this point.
Hey, guys. So John was going to handle the presentation on our end, and then I can, if anything needed, I'm happy to talk as well, but...
Okay, so John, I assume John Ravnick is using Suzie's computer. And so if we can unmute Suzie Ravnick's computer, I think we'll be hearing from John Ravnick.
Can you hear me clearly?
I can hear you, thank you.
You get it, sir, thank you. At the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that there was a fourth public comment. I have not received a copy of that. Can somebody bring us up to speed on that content?
Sure, Ms. Ware, can you explain what that fourth comment was?
Sure, yeah, and John, I can send that to you as well. It was John Wright, neighbor on Polty Street, discussing the lighting requirements and concerned that they hadn't been properly addressed.
Okay, no, that sounds great. And I'll go straight to lighting. One of the questions that I have, first of all, yes, we will shield or hood the lights that are on the southernly face of the existing mini-storage facility. A question to be answered by staff when it gets back to them. What's the measure, what's our unit that we're trying to establish? Should we shield the lights and then maybe take photographs at night? Or what would be prudent to determine that we've done sufficient reduction of the light cast? So if we just hold that answer for the moment, that will help us. I do appreciate Mr. Lundstram's comments about the interior lighting not being a negative influence on him. That same, very similar style lighting will be building-mounted within the new proposal, and that'll shed or cast all the light internally. So with the building heights that we have, the buildings themselves will, in many areas, function as a shield, but we will nonetheless also put hoods on the lights just to reduce any upward cast that might otherwise happen. Landscaping, there will be a licensed landscape architect that is retained to do the landscape plan that will help to assure conformance with the city's regulations for landscaping improvements. In regards to building setbacks, I greatly appreciate the city's involvement to communicate with us at the end of last week, where we were able to discuss actual building heights that we got from the building designer versus what we had anticipated building heights when we prepared the initial applications. So the tallest building was on the north property line. When we had done our supplemental project description, which was updated to an updated date of July 1, 2020, we had forecasted that northernmost building having a peak height in the order of 20 to 24 feet. And then we actually found out that the building was only 16 to 17 and a half feet high. So in our discussion with Mr. Coleman last Friday, he felt that was acceptable, and it didn't warrant having to relocate that building. The city code, when it comes to side yard setbacks, involve a term called "step back." And the term "step back" is used in one sentence throughout code and doesn't have any description on it. So we understood from our conversations with staff on Friday that step back is kind of having a stair-stepped approach where the building on the property line would be shorter and taller buildings would be behind that. So that condition already exists along the east property lines. So I understand that staff is supportive of the east side of this project having a 20-foot setback as is currently presented. In regards to the west building, we've dropped that building two feet lower than what it originally was. A copy of the revised plan had been emailed to Mr. Coleman last Friday late in the afternoon, and that identified what the revised building height would be, instead of being 15 foot, three inches. Instead of being fifteen foot three inches, it was reduced down to thirteen foot three inches. And that's the building height as measured on the west, call it backside of the building. And that building's roof slopes internally where the door eve or the east wall would be reduced down to twelve feet. One of the things that we did not know from Mako was what is the recommended slopes of these roofs? And we were assuming a one to twelve or two to twelve pitch. And we found out that they can go as flat as one half to one, thereby further reducing the buildings. So with the lights mounted internally, the building's functioning as a block. If it's necessary for functionality, that we have a hood, we would do so. But I think with the building mounted lights and not trying to get a light to cast two hundred feet away, rather go with some smaller lights and more frequently, we can control all the light internally within the project. So we're moving the whole forward with the twenty foot setbacks applicable to the side yard east, side yard west, and rear yard north. We'll work with staff to figure out how do we measure reduced light from the existing building. Building heights were updated into the city last Friday and are less than what we had represented in our updated supplemental buildings description, which I understand everyone has. I'm gonna touch on access locations. There's only two points of access into this project. And one of them, actually, if you want to call it three, a vehicle can drive into the existing mini storage area. And from there, they can drive northerly at two locations into the proposed mini storage expansion. And then also at the very southeastern corner of the five acre mini storage expansion project, there is an adjacent driveline immediately south that Mr. Campbell has rights of access to. And that would probably, that would predominantly be used for larger vehicles to get in rather than bringing a large moving van through the existing mini storage. Traffic is very small on facilities like this. Utility needs are very, very simple in that they boil down to drainage and electricity and water. And all the drainage from this site will be kept internally within the property boundaries, treated as necessary and soaked into the ground. And available power and water will be obtained from the adjacent mini storage to serve this project. It has been a very, very good process to go through with staff. They've been very helpful. They've been very, very detailed, which I greatly appreciate. And I think that it's going to be an excellent project, you know, in this setback from Highway twenty. It's a good use for this land to serve the surrounding community in the city of Seadrill. I would like to have Lance touch on his thoughts on fencing.
Okay. So we'll go back to Mr. Campbell, that's Lance on our panelist list.
Okay. One thing I wanted to mention, getting back to Carl's comments, there's definitely not going to be a gate for general access, but there would be some sort of a gate there. And I've talked to Carl about this, just for PSE to access there if they had to get to the high power lines. But it certainly wouldn't be for any public use.
And clarify for me what you're talking about there.
On the, let's see, the southwest of the, kind of in between where the two phases are going, right near, there's an alleyway near Carl's house. And that alleyway would just be for Puget Sound Energy has high powered utilities going through there. And so they need to have access from that side if need be. Generally, they would be accessing through the facility.
Okay, so then theoretically, there might be a utility access or even emergency access over to, I can't see the name of the street on.
It would be, it would be in the alleyway to the north of Carl's house.
Right off of Carter Street?
Yeah, which is already existing.
Right, but there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be public access.
Correct, yeah.
And then is, I guess, obviously, you're not going to be fencing the, in between the two portions of this project, but is there a fence around the rest of the project? I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, John, can you answer that, John or Catherine? Do we, are we required to put a, the same kind of a fencing around the whole project? Or is that, is it the landscaping that takes care of that?
Oh, it's the landscaping. Looking at your application, it looks like you proposed the landscaping for screening purposes. And staff finds that those two together don't make sense because if you have a fence, you're kind of blocking the landscaping and sort of defeating the purpose of that.
Got it.
Got it.
Catherine, if I may interject, John Ravnick here. I believe there will be some very, very short sections of fencing. As an example, up at the northwest corner or the northeast corner, to prevent people from getting in. And obviously, people can climb a fence if they're very committed to doing so. But simply in the northeast corner, having a short, maybe twenty foot long section of fence, just to close in that northeast corner. And similarly, it would be up in the northwest corner. Lance, do you think that you would fence those or just rely on the landscaping?
Yeah, I think just for purposes of securing the perimeter, there is, there is a building not completely encompassing. We'd want to have some sort of fencing there.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess looking at the site plan, essentially, building N to the north provides, you know, it serves a security purpose by just being a large building. And so you're saying you would have a small fence then in between, I guess it's building N on its backside connecting up to the front corner of building P. So that you'd kind of, the buildings themselves would create internal space with a couple of small fences. But they wouldn't be at the property line, they'd be connecting the buildings. Is that, am I understanding the idea right?
Correct.
Okay. Great, I think that answers the specific questions I had. Did you have further comments, Mr. Ravnick or Mr. Campbell?
No, I do not believe that I did. We will definitely work with staff on the lighting issue. No, it's a good project. It's a great.
And Ms. Ware, did you have, or Mr. Coleman, any kind of thoughts on what does a lighting plan look like? How does, how do the applicant, how does the applicant team ensure that they will successfully address that requirement of the MDNS?
I can, I can take that.
Okay, this is John Coleman.
Yes. To remind, remind me, I've got three things I want to talk about, including this one.
Okay.
So the lighting, they, yes, they can just submit, like, the screening plan, like, what they're going to use to screen the lights. And it would need to be something that's meant for that, you know, you can't just use duct tape. Has to be some sort of specific material that is designed for screening lights on these particular light. What we, what we use is, you know, the idea of cutoff where the light only shines down from the, from the light source instead of outwards. Outwards and down, but, you know, they can't just continue on in a parallel plane forever. So the submitting what they plan to use to screen. And if they wanted to have something fancy showing, you know, like how the light is dispersed, how the light travels downward from those lights and where it would, it would go to, that would be really nice. But otherwise, probably just what the materials they are producing and then some pictures at night would be useful.
Okay. That was thing one, you had three things you said, John.
Yeah, so we were just talking about the landscaping and the screening. So our landscaping code does address screening. So this is, this is in the mixed commercial zone. So when adjacent to any residential zone, which it is on the east, west, and north, it's required to follow the screening regulations in chapter seventeen point five oh point one two oh, which is screening. The minimum screening width for, is thirty-five feet, but it can go down to be reduced if you use an earth berm, a fence, or a wall. The easiest as a fence alternative would allow you to reduce it down to fifteen feet of landscaping. If you have a fence that extends minimum six feet above the adjacent sidewalk or road, is incorporated into the screening plan, then that would be useful. So we do have to, you know, there's several ways you can address screening in this landscape chapter. So I don't want to say that the, you know, they need to lock themselves into anything right now at this moment. But there's likely a chance that they will have to do a fence anyway, just to meet this requirement.
I guess my question there, though, Mr. Coleman, is if I'm looking at this plan and building N is, you know, twelve or fourteen feet tall or whatever they said, and it's the backside of building N covers almost the entire north property lengthwise, where would that fence go? I mean, would you put a fence at the back property line and then all the landscaping in between? That seems problematic. Or you would have a fence literally up against building N?
That doesn't make any sense.
Right, so I guess my. Sorry, go ahead.
It would be on the property line. Just like they did on the east property, or sorry, the west property of the existing facility. They have a fence and then landscaping.
Okay.
Property line and then landscaping in between the fence and the building.
If I may interject here, John Ravnick. John Coleman, what's the provisions to be fencing? You also mentioned bounding, is that correct?
Yeah.
Do you have a required mounting height or?
That extends a minimum of six feet above the adjacent sidewalk or road right away is incorporated into the screening plan. The width of the screening area may be reduced to fifteen feet.
So really, in a, you know, in order to do maintenance and mowing in a twenty foot wide strip, a mounting height realistically of under order of about three feet is all one could logically build. So three feet, then that doesn't suffice then, does it?
I'm not sure if that's the best alternative for this site. And, you know, you've got the earth berm alternative, the fence alternative, or a wall alternative.
Well, I guess, what do you mean by wall, too? I mean, does, does.
All is a wall, like a concrete textured concrete or masonry block wall.
Okay, so the wall of building N doesn't count as a wall? The backside of building N?
No, these are meant on the further property line.
Okay. So then you're, so this wasn't addressed previously, but so in your.
This is landscaping, this comes at the time of the building permit, right?
Right, okay. So I mean, I guess, A, should I, should I even include anything about this in my decision? I want to give, I feel like I want to give some discretion to the city to work with the applicant to come up with something that makes sense.
So if you, I think that, I think that's the proper way to go. And, you know, maybe we may, maybe we do some discretion and say, you know, it's just a fence without like slating in it. So it provides some security to the, to the properties and some delineation of the properties, but the landscaping is still visible. I think that's what we did on the west side of the existing property. Is they put a fence in, but they didn't, they didn't put slats in it so the neighbors can see through the fence, see the landscaping.
Okay. Well, I guess in my mind, I'm, I'm most comfortable kind of leaving the discretion up to, again, the city and the applicant to work together to meet the intent and requirement of the code. But I don't think under, under the criteria for a CUP, I need to get into that level of detail. Does that seem right to you, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was thing two, there was a third potential thing.
And the third issue that we're discussing is John Ravnick was talking about having a fourteen foot tall building on the west side. That is not what we had discussed in our conversations. What we discussed is putting the shortest buildings that they're building on the perimeter. So on the, on the east and west perimeter at least. So that would include, that would include changing the buildings that are now slated to be either twelve feet or thirteen feet to shorter buildings. That would be, I think, they have several on the interior that are nine foot four or eight foot, nine foot four to, or nine, yeah, nine foot four buildings at the peak.
Okay, so I'm looking at a landscape plan. I think it's listed as preliminary landscape plan, but there's names for these buildings. So what you're saying is, what I'm seeing is building P, which would be the building on the east side. And then I think building M and maybe potentially building L.
Primarily, what I'm talking about is building M. They've submitted some preliminary drawings showing building L and building P to be nine foot four. And building M, they're proposing to be taller. And what we're stating is to meet the step back requirements, building M needs to be one of the shorter models.
Okay, it should be similar in size to building P, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Ravnick, thoughts on that?
Could I, this is Lance, could I weigh in on that?
Yep, this would be Mr. Campbell again.
So one of the things that we did was, we lowered, so the thirty foot buildings, which is building M on the west side.
M?
I believe that's M. I don't, I don't have the plan right in front of me because it's on my phone.
Building is building M as in Mary, John Ravnick.
So, so on the west property with the storage facility, when you have, we only have access to one side on that building because the backside is on a property line. So one of the challenges is that creates a situation where if we want to have a thirty foot building versus one of the interior buildings that you're saying we can make lower, you know, the nine foot ceilings, those are, those are thirty foot buildings wide, but it's, it's access from both sides. So it allows you to do smaller units on those internal buildings. Does that make sense? So let me give you an example. If you have an alleyway, those buildings are running east, west on the internal portions. And when you have an alleyway on the, the north side and on the south side, you can do essentially two smaller buildings, right? But from the, if you step back and look at it, it's all a thirty foot long building. It's just that you can access it from both sides. So that allows you to do the smaller units in there. Smaller units, we can have smaller. Smaller units, we can have smaller doors versus when you get on the perimeter, that's really where it makes sense to do the bigger units, like a thirty-foot deep unit, because you already can't get to it from the other side. So what we did is, we're trying to keep those scrunched down as short as we can. We went from doing those ten and twelve-by-thirties on Building M. We went from doing twelve-foot door there, which is standard for, ideal for a thirty-foot unit, we brought it down to ten feet. So that lowered, you know, we gave up quite a bit there, actually. Now we can't get RVs in there or, or bigger boats. So we're really trying to make, we shrunk everything down as much as we can feasibly, you know, still be, still make this, this expansion work. Relative to some of the other buildings internally, there are some smaller buildings height-wise internally, but there's also bigger buildings. And so we felt, that's why we, we tried to weigh the balance between being economically feasible, yet also meeting this step-down requirement. So that, that would be the reasoning, if you guys followed that. As far as, yeah, I guess, so we did, we did lower it significantly, and hopefully that's enough to be, to allow us to, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, guys. There's, there's the, the alleyways, because we're trying to provide, we've noticed in Seadrug Woolly particularly, there's, there's contractors that want to come in with, with, you know, pulling a truck and their trailer behind them, and it's very difficult for them to navigate through the smaller alleyways. And so what we've done is gone above and beyond in providing a forty-five-foot alleyway around the outer perimeter, and the corners bigger, so that, you know, if, if somebody did have a, a bigger U-Haul or a truck and trailer, they could pull in that, the new gate that we proposed, come in and be able to drive around the whole outer perimeter and make it back out. So if we just start swapping buildings around, while it, I, I get where you're coming from on wanting to do that, but it, it really affects those outer buildings, the bigger buildings really need to be on the perimeter to allow for that driveway access that makes sense for, for the people in Seadrug Woolly. So that's, that's kind of what we're trying to balance out here. And, and truly, we, we are shrinking these buildings down dramatically from what we initially intended. So I don't know if that helps at all.
So like, like we discussed, if the, the, the step-back requirements are that the smaller buildings be on the outside and the bigger buildings be on the inside, if you want to take advantage of the twenty-foot setback, you're welcome to have the taller buildings on the outside, if that's better for your project, but then we'll, then we will stick by the thirty-five-foot setbacks from the sides. So if you can't put a shorter building on the perimeter, then you, then the code says you need to do a thirty-five-foot setback. That's black and white, not, not, not saying you can't have the taller buildings on the outside, it just says you have to have a taller, a wider setback. But I don't know if that's something, if this is something that the hearing examiner needs to weigh in on or not, but I'll leave that up to the hearing examiner.
I mean, I'm not going to weigh in on the record like this. This, I think, is something I'm going to have to think about. But I understand what the code says. I guess, nobody's requested any kind of a variance from any of the requirements, and I don't have that in front of me, so, you know.
Could I ask a question when you're done?
Go ahead.
Is the step-back, the step-back portion, see, we're trying to balance out the, the step-back with also the lighting, because it seems to be more people are concerned about the lighting than the heights of the buildings. And so one, two, two things. One is, the step-back doesn't, I don't see anything where it says all the internal buildings need to be shorter. I thought it was just that it, it needs to be, that, that's the spirit of the step-back. So while we might have, well, while there might be a shorter building on internally, if you compare it to the building, some of the other buildings internally, that west perimeter will be shorter than, say, the... John, can you tell me which, which, I don't have the map in front of me, but the building just to the south of the northernmost building?
Lance, that's, the northernmost building is sixteen to seventeen point seven feet tall.
The next one back, what's the next one back?
Yep, the next one south is Building T, as in Tom, and it has a fourteen-foot peak height and a short eve of twelve foot four inches. So in relationship to Building M, at the thirteen foot, thirteen foot three inch, Building T is higher.
That's, yeah, so that's kind of what I'm getting at, is the spirit of it is, we're trying, that's our intention, we are creating that step-back. But, you know, as you get, as you get to the, way to the south, there's going to naturally be some buildings that, that may, you know, as we try to navigate with Puget Power, because they don't want a tall building right there internally, right next to their, underneath the power lines, so there, you know, there's that component. And then we're also trying to balance this whole thing with lighting. That, that really seems to be the, to me, talking with the neighbors and, and whatnot, the lighting is, is a big concern. So by kind of balancing that out and creating a little bit of a buffer on the sides to, to block the lighting, we're also doing the step-back technically.
So, Mr. Campbell, what I would like to do is this. You, you and Mr. Ravnick have referenced, or I've heard multiple times today, that there are additional new plans that have been submitted that I don't believe I have. And so what I think the, the thing to do would be, let's leave the record open till the end of the week, or if you need longer, let me know. But the idea would be, I want to see these new plans, I want it clearly labeled and indicated for me in some form or another what the building heights are. And then I'm going to give you an opportunity to write why you think the, the heights that you're proposing meet the intent of the municipal code requirements related to step-backs, and lay it all out for me, and I'll, I'll give city staff an opportunity to, you know, respond as well. But I, rather than just go back and forth for an hour today, especially because I don't have the plan that you're talking about, I think even the plan I'm looking at has differently named buildings, so I'm just getting more and more confused. And, and I know the plans have changed. So I, I, I really think that's the way forward at this point. Does that make sense, Mr. Campbell?
Sure, if, if everybody thinks that would be best.
Well, thankfully, it's really up to me to decide, so I, I think it's best. But does that, timing-wise for you, how long would you need with Mr. Ravnick to put something together?
Yeah, we, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't provide that for you this week.
Okay, so by Friday. And then, Mr. Coleman, would the city like an opportunity to weigh in on whatever's provided, or leave it up to me? What are, what are your thoughts there?
I'd like the opportunity to, to provide feedback.
Okay, so if they get me this by Friday, that would be, let me get my calendar out. Okay, Friday would be the eleventh. Mr. Coleman, how long would you, do you think you would need to respond once you've, you've seen what they produce?
So presumably, we would get it Monday or late Friday.
Right.
So, no holidays next week, we could have something to you by the end of the day, Tuesday?
Oh, give yourself till Wednesday. Just in case. So Wednesday, the sixteenth?
Okay.
So this is what I'm going to do. So by Friday, we'll say four PM, Friday, September eleventh, the applicant should submit the new plans, and those plans should clearly detail, again, I'm not approving project plans, I just, I, I want to understand the issue. So it would be helpful in some way for those plans to indicate what the heights are, so that I can make some kind of logical decision about this step-back issue. So that should be included on there. And then the city will have until next Wednesday at four PM to respond. The record will close, and I'll, I'll produce a decision. Well, on everything, but on that particular issue will be one of the things that I specifically address in my decision. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, did you have any other thoughts on the proposal you wanted to share before we move on?
I had one question on getting back to the, the landscaping. If we did the fence, does that mean then there's no, we can just do grass between the fence and the building, or would we still have to do the, the landscaping, the trees?
That's all in landscaping code, you just need to look it up.
Got it. Got it, thank you.
Right, and so back to, just on the issue of landscaping, like I said, I think at this stage, we're looking more conceptually, and I don't, I'm wary of, of putting anything in stone, because I think that it's probably best for the city and the applicant to be able to, you know, work on this with any potential feedback that's received from neighbors, rather than me just propose something that nobody likes ultimately. So, and, and I don't think it's a requirement in addressing the conditional use permit criteria that I specifically address that, unlike, say, with a plat. You know, the actual landscaping would be addressed during the building permit stage, so. Mr. Ravnick, did you have any final things before I, I check back in with Mr. Coleman?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Lundstram, you spoke earlier, but did you have final thoughts to, to weigh in on?
I do, just a couple. One is, as far as the building heights, I believe the building that is behind my property, the existing building, that is directly east of me, was a taller building than the other ones. I personally feel that the lighting, because that building is a little taller, I think that that is probably diffusing some of the lighting from the, from the original site. I originally, originally thought that that building was maybe be too tall, but I actually am happy with the way it turned out. If that makes sense. It seems like the light from the, as I was telling you earlier, the light from the internal almost goes straight up. I have no effect whatsoever of any of the lighting for the, what's there now. As far as fencing slash landscaping, again, I originally had asked for no slats on the fence behind me and was want, wanting landscaping put in. It was changed to the point of, they, they actually put slats in and planted grass behind my house, and I am very happy with the way that turned out. I much rather like that than, than grass, or than landscaping. Again, I, I wouldn't want trees growing up taller than the buildings, and, and I'm happy with that. And as far as fencing, we were, you guys were talking about fencing either on the perimeter or, or having the buildings be the, the fencing. I'd kind of like to see, if possible, the fence that runs behind me extended out to Building L, and that would probably be a gate, because PSC would need to have access. And then the fence, if needed, continue from, from Building M, to kind of leave that, that area a bit open, instead of having it fenced, that corner, the would be the southeast corner of the new, new area. Or southwest, excuse me, southwest corner there by my property. We could work out something there to where a, a gate or a fence from the existing fence over to Building L. And I, oh, and then the only other question is, building heights were discussed. Does anybody have the building height of Building L?
No, I didn't, construction plans, and I, I don't think, I, I don't think those are not handy.
Okay, no problem. Okay, that's all for me.
Great, thank you. Mr. Coleman, any final thoughts before I go ahead and close the record, or Ms. Ware?
Uh, no comments from me.
Ms. Ware, did you have any final thoughts?
No comments from me.
Okay, so thank you. I am going to go ahead, and like I said, caveat being, the applicant is going to have till four PM this Friday to submit an additional exhibit. I'm going to call it Exhibit Q, but this will be applicant's additional exhibit. And that exhibit should essentially, you know, be just sort of a clear project plan that in some way, shape, or form explains for me what the building heights are, and then the applicants can provide a, a sort of a narrative on why they believe the proposed building heights comply with that step-back requirement in the municipal code. And then by Wednesday, end of the day, four PM on the sixteenth, the city will provide any kind of response. The city's response, I'm going to make Exhibit R. And then the record will close at that time, and I will produce a decision within ten working days of the record closing there on the sixteenth. So I think that's it. I want to thank everyone for being here and being a part of the process, and I wish everyone safety and good health moving forward. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.